Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Members present this evening are my, or well, actually as listed, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, Councilmember CO, Del Orco, Dylan Kraus, Mayor Potem Girba, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, Assistant City Manager Getzmann, Community Development Director Harrington, and Waste Water Treatment Superintendent Briggs, along with Parks and Rec Director Skoll and Scruggs. What did I say? Skoll? Well, I'm in the past of late. And we also have City Engineer Humphreys with us. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as, I guess amended. There's a few modifications to verbiage and a few items, I think, have been removed from consent and put under new business. Move to approve as amended by Mayor Potem Girba is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dylan. All those in favor approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meeting Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? The record will reflect there are nuns. We proceed then to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to submit it.
Second.
Move by CO to approve the consent agenda as submitted, and that was seconded by our council colleague, Ms. Kraus. Okay, what?
Twenty-two dash two-one-six, Building Department Tech.
Okay, that gets added under new business. Mr. CO, would you be amenable to approving as amended?
That's fine.
And Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move to public hearing twenty-two dash two-one-zero, special land use for adult-use marijuana realtor at four-sixty-five East Michigan Ave. The first motion will be, motion to open the public hearing, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue. The motion will be to open the public hearing at seven oh-three.
Moved.
Moved by Mayor Potem Girba is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? Please come forward to the podium. You will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council. My name is Andy Andre from Avanti Development Group, three-three-zero Enterprise Court, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Green Trend, and this is a request that we're trying to move forward. We've already been to Planning Commission for preliminary site plan. We have also submitted the final site plan as well as part of this application. And the location at four-sixty-five East Michigan Avenue is within an existing retail center, and we're looking at about, right around four thousand odd square feet utilized within that space. The applicant, as I mentioned, is Green Trend. Will operate as High Society. That's the name of the company which it operates under. Currently, High Society has a adult-use and medical location in Big Rapids, dispensary location there, has two dispensaries that are currently under construction in Lenox Township, which is over in Macomb County, and East Lansing as well. That's under construction. Both of those two should be open by the end of the year. And there are both indoor and outdoor grow, two locations in the city of Warren for indoor grow, and there's an outdoor grow as part of the overall company portfolio within, it's in Bangor, near, on the west side of the state. This location, we submitted, addressed all the items that were required for special use and also the preliminary site plan. There were several conditions that were attached to the preliminary site plan as it moved forward, as the recommendation as well from the Planning Commission. We addressed all of those items, actually, at the time of the Planning Commission meeting where we had an opportunity to speak. We provided responses to all of those items, so we feel that we can address every single one of the items that were brought up. And those items were also incorporated as part of the final site plan that was submitted as well. So we believe that we were hitting on all the items. We put together a project that special land use and site plan can be approved and be happy to answer any questions that come up during the process. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate your remarks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? You'll have three minutes. Then the Chair would be happy to entertain a motion to close the public hearing at seven oh-six PM. Move by Girba is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The public hearing is now closed. We proceed to the action item, which is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated August seventeenth, 2022, from Recording Secretary Ritchie, and to approve with conditions or to not approve the special land use for four-sixty-five East Michigan Ave for adult-use marijuana retailer.
Move to acknowledge and approve with conditions.
Move by CO to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. In Deputy Clerk Ritchie's absence, Community Development Director Green, would you like to speak to this issue, and then we'll entertain questions from the deas?
Harrington.
Harrington. Verbal ticks. My apologies. Please take no offense.
I believe this was approved unanimously by the planning, sorry, recommended for approval unanimously by the Planning Commission, as well as the site plan. It met all seven, I believe, seven criteria of the special land use. The only concern site plan-wise had to do with the entrance and exit via the delivery on the rear side of the building. However, the applicant informed us they're not intending to accept any deliveries or use anything with the loading dock on the north side of the building. Technically, it's noncompliant for parking. However, the Planning Commission did not believe that the proposed use would exacerbate the nonconformity, given the ample amount of parking that would be there. For your reference, per our code, there would require three-hundred-and-seven spaces of parking. This is the same shopping center that contains that Dollar Tree and that Goodwill or whatever dollar store it is. However, there only have a hundred-and-ninety-one existing parking spots. However, the Planning Commission found that that was not going to be an issue for this proposed site or proposed use at the site, and ultimately, like I said, approved pretty quickly without any contentions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Are there questions for our Community Development Director? Councilmember Dylan.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington, just one question on special land use, just to confirm that should this building, the special land use, special land use does not live on in perpetuity, correct?
Correct.
Meaning if this business were to leave, it doesn't automatically open the door to another dispensary going into that space?
Correct. It's a mixture of applicant and property. So if the applicant were to change property, the special land use would not follow them. Or if the property were to effectively change to a different group looking to license at the site, et cetera, if they were to close and then try to reopen under a different name, under a different ownership, that would be problematic and I believe violate the terms of the special land use itself. So it would be revoked effectively.
And should they leave, then it, once again, it reopens the thousand?
Yeah, so it would reopen under the new, or the current ordinance guidelines as opposed to the previous guidelines that this applicant applied underneath.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions for Mr. Harrington? Mayor Potem Girba.
I prefer a clarification on that statement you just made, Mr. Harrington, from our legal team, because Mr. Forshee had stated something differently during the Planning Commission.
All right.
That it ran with the property and that it could not be changed after a year or two. So as example of, if it was a special land use to be for a supermarket, and it was shut down for fifteen years, and we didn't want it to be a supermarket, the city didn't, they still would have the opportunity to run it as a supermarket.
I can check with current legal counsel, but I'm almost positive that's not correct.
Yeah, and I felt that too, because that was always what I believed in the past, but it would be helpful to have that clarification.
We'll expect follow-up on that point. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Thank you, Mr. Girba. Any additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Then it's been moved by CO, seconded by Kamara Sulek, to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to do public hearing number twenty-two dash two-zero-two, special land use for medical marijuana provisioning center at four-sixty-five East Michigan Ave. Again, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at seven-ten, affording the public to speak to this issue.
So moved.
Move by Girba is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? Please come to the podium. You will have three minutes.
Move to close.
Move to close by Girba at seven-eleven. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. All those in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The subsequent motion will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated August the seventeenth, 2022, from Recording Secretary Ritchie, and to approve with conditions or to not approve the special land use at four-sixty-five East Michigan Ave for medical marijuana provisioning center.
Move to acknowledge and approve with conditions.
Move by CO to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. Again, Mr. Harrington, do you care to share some obligatory remarks for the record?
Sure. Just for the council's edification as well as the public's, this is required as the processes for Medical Provisioning Center and Adult Use Retail are distinctly separate and are ordinance. Therefore, they require separate semitals of site plans as well as special land use applications, and thus separate public hearings and separate hearings at Planning Commission meetings, which is why we're hearing the medical side of this now. The previous one you just passed was for adult use. But once again, passed Planning Commission unanimously, and no concerns, if I recall correctly, from the Planning Commission.
Any questions from the deas? Any discussion on the motion? No? Okay. We have a motion on the floor, move by CO, seconded by Kamara Sulek, to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to the unfinished business portion of our agenda. First up is Agenda Item twenty-two dash one-eight-nine, two thousand twenty-two Boarding Commission Appointment Policy. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Assistant City Manager Getzmann to approve or not to approve the two thousand twenty-two Boarding Commission Appointment Policy.
Move to acknowledge.
Move by Girba to acknowledge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kraus. City Manager O'Toole, would you like to begin, or would you like to defer to the Assistant City Manager?
I'm happy to cover this topic. Basically, what we did after our last council meeting is incorporate the few changes that had been requested. Specifically, we set some time parameters around how long we would post vacancies for, so those will now be posted for seven days. As well, we cleaned up some of the language that was requested from Councilmember Dylan, and I believe at this point are hoping that we have a near-final version. So I would ask council if there's any additional changes before we move forward.
Questions for the City Manager? Ms. Dylan?
So the only question that I had, and this is just more for the body, not just directed at the City Manager, is that when the applications are received, is there any opportunity for council to see the body of applications, just to understand who has applied? I know the mayor gets to bring forward the candidate he wants, but council does get to vote upon that. And so if we have the opportunity to see the whole group, I think it would just make for a better decision-making process.
Do you have a suggestion for where in the body of this you'd like to incorporate that language?
I don't know. I mean, that can just be sort of a friendly amendment-type thing where it's just what we do. I don't know if that's something that...
If there's no objection from the rest of council, I'm sure we could create a shared folder for that information.
Yeah, I have no objections to that language. I do want to be clear, having done this now for ten years, that, I was just talking to Councilmember Kraus about this in advance of the meeting. Generally, applications, I think it's a good policy to post a vacancy for seven days or a week. But the general rule is that applications come in based on generally one of us or somebody who's involved in this organization directly soliciting one of our neighbors or friends to apply to a particular board or commission, based on their talent, time, availability. So I just want to be clear that I don't anticipate with a change in policy a huge influx of applications, but I think it's perfectly reasonable to body as a whole.
So do we want to incorporate any specific language, or are we just happy kind of making that part of the informal process that will share those applications?
I think a sentence in the policy would be appropriate. And I, City Manager O'Toole, I trust you and staff to develop that.
It's a real complicated one. I think we'll figure it out.
Additional questions for the City Manager? Okay, we have a motion on the floor then to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve the policy, noting the one addition that will be inserted in the coming days?
Move to approve with that one condition.
Move by Girba to approve, noting the additional language. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. Any additional discussion on the policy? All those in favor of the motion moved by Girba, seconded by Kamara Sulek, to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item twenty-two dash one-ninety-three, public participation policy. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the public participation policy and to approve or not to approve as submitted.
Acknowledge and approve.
Move by CO to acknowledge and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Del Orco. City Manager O'Toole or Clerk Royal, do you care to make some comments for the record this evening?
Actually, I would ask if council is amenable, we could delay action or postpone this to our next meeting. I did want to have our new legal counsel review the section on how we handle, I guess, decisions to not read a portion of the written letter, and also how we should handle whether a section of the letter would go beyond three minutes. So whether that needs to be redacted in the minutes themselves to that point, or we post the full letter.
I see no objection in asking the, our new legal team to review the policy, especially considering that we reconvene in a week's time and can consider acting or and/or approving the proposed policy at that time. While we're on this topic, are there other questions, additions, or changes that council members would recommend that we can incorporate into a revised document and consider on the nineteenth? Councilmember Kraus.
So, thank you, Mayor. So I agree. I think I brought this up at one of our last meetings as well. I have a real problem with opening that up for people to have something in writing that is several pages long without it being redacted, because then that, the way I'm understanding this, would become a part of the official record. And so that then can and will, or could, I should say, sway opinions, and that's an unfair advantage. So I think that definitely needs to be addressed. So maybe somebody would read an email real quick, and wherever you stop, the rest is redacted. I'm not sure of how the sausage should be made, but...
Good. Additional questions? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. I had brought this issue before to the City Manager, so I appreciate that she has taken it. The other comment that I would like to make is that when we talk about in-person, is setting limits that a speaker cannot speak on behalf of somebody. That meaning that I can't come to the deas and read somebody else's statement. I'd like that to be expressly stated. I know that that was an issue in other bodies.
Can I piggyback on that?
Yes.
That's an excellent point, City Manager O'Toole, and I would be interested in what legal's perspective is on that matter. There are a number of public boards and bodies that allow individuals, other individuals, to read comments of petitioners who aren't able to be present at a meeting. I don't find that to be kosher or appropriate. So I think some sort of, some language that would prevent that or compel them to submit in writing to the clerk's office. I think a neutral voice or party reading that, I would not object to. But I do think that issue should be vetted and explored, and if deemed appropriate by legal counsel, I would also support language to that effect being inserted into this policy.
Certainly.
Sorry to take your...
No, that's okay. And then my last question is that, one thing that we never state in our public comment is limiting of public comment into a time period. There are other bodies that say public comment will be limited to thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, whatever the case may be. Because that is another issue when we're going to start reading things in. We could have an hour of reading things into the record. We could have endless amounts of time if this were to open up. Generally, when we have people in audience, it tends to be fewer people. But we did see that as we started to allow people to speak through email, that we were having increasing numbers of that. So I would like to sort of tighten that up if there's a possibility. I don't know what the legality is of it. I do know that, like I said, other bodies have a time limit for public comment.
Interestingly enough, I'm not sure when it went away, but for years during my, during the early part of my tenure as mayor and as a council member, and when I first started attending and participating in public meetings, the verbiage always said forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
So I don't see why that language cannot be reinserted, and I would also recommend similar verbiage, for the sake of consistency, at every other Board and Commission within our municipal portfolio. That does not prevent in any way the legislative body, either that, either council or the Parks Commission or Planning Commission, from extending the public comment period. But the standard rule would be forty-five minutes in total. And again, Mr. Girba would have more perspective on that. But that was used, that practice and policy was used by the city of Saline for several decades, and I did not view it as problematic.
And I don't remember when that came off. It might have been a recommendation, I think it might have been a recommendation, that that limit be taken off so that the body could set its own time limit. By putting forty-five minutes in there, you were basically telling him you're giving forty-five minutes. So did that mean that you were going to leave it open for forty-five minutes, or...
Can you say not to exceed?
I think the, I think the language was forty-five minutes in total.
Okay.
That the individual was granted, there's three minutes granted per person with forty-five minutes in total for that particular public comment period.
I mean, if you read the Open Meetings Act, it's pretty clear. It says we can set the time period and everything. So yeah, that clarification would be helpful. When I was talking with Councilmember Dylan about that, I know that came up a number of times because we had to extend it for a number of public meetings in the past. We haven't had to do it lately. My only one question that I had is in terms of if someone submits a written document, like a written letter, or sends an email, we still, as a council, can acknowledge those as a part of the minutes. We may not have to read it, but there's no objection to them continuing to send hard mail, hard letter mails to us to be acknowledged by this council for public comment.
In the, as a public comment?
Correct. As a public comment.
Yes, although we have to decide if, or talk to legal about where the cutoff is, if the total length of the letter normally exceeds reading.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to make sure that we can still continue to have, someone writes a letter to us, that that can still...
Yeah, we are absolutely permitted to do that, and we are going above and beyond in terms of minimum requirements for other participation by offering that.
Yeah, because I was trying to familiar myself with the Open Meetings Act again, and there was so much confusion with COVID and what ended December thirty-first of last year, and what is acceptable as electronic versus non-electronic and all that. So I'm glad to hear that it's going to occur. The other one was if we continue to broadcast electronically, we just are doing this as a benefit to the community. It does not allow necessarily the requirement to have comments accepted via Facebook or any other electronic means during the meeting, correct?
Correct, yes. And we've made clear statements that we do not accept public comments through Facebook.
Thank you. I just wanted to...
And this policy also, as written, requires public comments to be submitted before the meeting, so we wouldn't request, or we wouldn't take any comments in real time virtually.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, concerns regarding the proposed policy? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. Going back to the time that we stated, the four o'clock, I just was thinking about this. So if we were to have a meeting that started earlier in the day, how would you adjust for that? So should it actually be a time as in like two hours before the start of the meeting?
I really, really appreciate the way that you think through contingencies, Janet. Yes, it should be. Should be like a specific time period before the start of the meeting. So we can change, I think, two hours before would be sufficient, three.
Sounds like three hours.
Three hours before.
Any objection to incorporating that language into the policy?
No. I mean, you were recommending we postpone it, though, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yeah. So these changes will all be incorporated in the next version.
Any additional suggestions, comments, concerns about said policy? Then I would ask Mr. CO and Mr. Del Orco, this is DB, it's somewhat from Roberts Rules, but would you retract your motion to acknowledge and approve and reoffer a motion to postpone consideration to a date certain, which would be September the nineteenth?
I'm fine with that.
Good, okay. So it's now moved by CO, seconded by Del Orco, to postpone consideration of the public participation policy to a date certain. That date certain is our next regular meeting on September the nineteenth. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. As long as it's in the affirmative or in the negative, that's fine. We move on to new business item one, which is Agenda Item twenty-two dash two-fourteen, rental inspection ordinance. Let's begin with a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington. And actually, there's not a date on that, so it's just to acknowledge receipt of his memo.
So moved.
Move by Kraus is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. Mr. Harrington, why don't you begin? And then I know we have our guest, Mr. Radzik here from Carlisle-Wartman, who can also address questions and concerns from my council colleagues.
Right, and City Manager O'Toole can help here, too. Obviously, there have been concerns about the state of the rental housing stock within the city of Saline for quite some time, the quality of living that people in them currently have, the standard of living that they currently have, not only at the two larger multi-tenant buildings, but just around the city and the other various rental opportunities that we have. So the purpose of this ordinance is not unique to Saline. It is not unique to suburbs of our size at all. It's to essentially do quality inspections of these to make sure that they're compliant with the International Property Maintenance Code and habitable and safe for the people who live in these facilities and live in these apartment buildings. So with that, I would give it to Mr. Radzik to talk a little bit more about how these inspections are conducted, and he'll obviously be doing it with Code Enforcement Services Division of Carlisle-Wartman, as they are rather time-consuming and taxing to do. So it would be an item that we contract out at the moment.
Mr. Radzik, please.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. As Mr. Harrington indicated, the ordinance is before you. This is the result, just so you know, this is a result of an exhaustive collaboration between Mr. Harrington's office, myself, and your attorney, Mr. O'Jack. We spent many, many hours going back and forth and changing it, so this has been heavily vetted by your legal counsel, who would be the one that would be tasked with defending it in court if it were ever challenged, or when citations were written to prosecute these cases. The ordinance is pretty self-explanatory. I'll just point out a couple of things that we discussed when this topic was first investigated. I'll just point out a couple of things that we discussed when this topic was first investigated because there were a lot of questions and suggestions from this board. The purpose is a very important, that's the very first section, that's extremely important. And I think the purpose here has been very clearly defined to establish responsibilities and duties for landlords and tenants that are essential to making dwelling safe, sanitary, and fit for human habitation and maintaining so throughout the tenancy. There was discussion about providing incentives for landlords, financial incentives for landlords to achieve code compliance the first time through, and that has been built into this ordinance. In the definitions, it's defined, it's called the Certificate of Compliance Incentive Bonus, and it's also more specifically described within the text of the ordinance. And essentially, it's a two-year biannual inspection cycle. But if a landlord significantly complies the first time through, and that doesn't mean it has to be perfect, but there can be no serious life safety violations and no more than a handful of minor violations that would be easily remedied by the first reinspection, they could earn an extra 12 months on that two-year cycle. So effectively, it's a 50% financial bonus for them. So that's built in here. We originally spoke of a 75-mile radius for the appointment of a local responsible agent. There was concern that, about absentee landlords that live a very far distance away and their immediate availability in the event of a crisis or an emergency. 75 miles was the original distance that was discussed. When it went to the code review committee, myself, Mr. Harrington, and others discussed it at length, and the committee recommended it be reduced to 50 miles, which is before you this evening. And it also had, if I'm not mistaken, it had a comment in there that 50 miles would extend into Canada. Not by much, but it would. And there was concern that responsible local agents be residents of the United States. And so the way this is worded at the recommendation of the code review committee is that if the landlord does not live within 50 miles, either live or have a place of business established within 50 miles of the city limits, the landlord would then be required to appoint a local designated agent who is responsible for the property, and that agent would have to be within 50 miles of the city in the United States. And again, that's at the recommendation of your code committee. Essentially, landlords would be required to first register each structure. Structure being defined as a single-family home, a two-family duplex is one structure, and a multifamily building, regardless of whether it's three units, eight units, 12 or 24, is considered a single structure. So each rental structure would then be separately registered, and the landlord would then report all of the contents within that structure. How many actual dwelling units and how many, what's termed in the ordinance, multifamily accessory facilities. And that would include things like laundry rooms, boiler rooms, mechanical rooms, fitness center, recreation facilities for tenants, if they exist. Each one of those would be separately inspected for code compliance. Once they're registered, then the first initial inspection would be scheduled by the city through its agents. Some places leave it up to the landlord to contact the city and request an inspection, but that's very problematic. You end up chasing people down for extended periods of time. The other benefit of doing it the opposite way, having the city schedule them, is, let's just say, for example, we end up with 1,200, just pick a number out of the air, 1,200 registered structures. You want to be able to successfully get all of them into compliance within a two-year period. So the city staff through its agents would have the ability to look at the calendar and schedule those out well in advance in order to accomplish that on a two-year cycle without having significant lengthy periods of downtime and without having times where you're just slammed and you're running into overtime, et cetera. So it makes it much easier to successfully manage the program by doing it that way. We would give the landlords, according to the ordinance, a minimum of 30 days' notice of their first inspection. And they would have an opportunity up until, I think, a week or maybe five days prior to the date to call and reschedule it if something occurs or it's just not convenient. Once they go through the inspection cycle and they, they receive a, a full compliance report, they then receive a certificate of compliance that is good for a two-year period. And again, if they do qualify for that incentive bonus, that two-year period then becomes a three-year period. Anytime the ownership transfers of a property, the new owner is required to come in and register that property under their own name. Anytime a landlord switches designated responsible agents, they're required also to report that as well. Another highlight would be in section 18, 186, the inspection guidelines and your property maintenance standards. Those are set forth in your code of ordinances in chapter 18 called Your Property Maintenance Code. And later on this evening, you are being asked to consider updating that from the current 2015 code to the most recent addition, which is the 2021 code. So that will be the measure against which these properties will be inspected. There'll also be reasonable fees that are set by resolution of the city council. And Ben, can you help me? I think you said that there was a sample fee schedule attached to this, but it's not before them this evening?
I believe that the sample fee schedule should be attached to your packet. It should be the last page.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that would be what the city charges to the property owners themselves.
Okay. And then finally, there's a section on harassment, which applies both to owners and their agents and to tenants as well, and for the building official and the inspectors doing the inspections. There's a process set out to report alleged incidences of harassment with resolution to it. And then, of course, penalties. This would be municipal civil infraction ordinance. This is not a criminal misdemeanor by any stretch. It's civil, just like a speeding ticket. And it would be heard in the district court, either by a magistrate in an informal hearing or by the district judge in a formal hearing. On the topic of fees, the last time I was here, we spoke about the cost of compliance for landlords. And we were using the most recent data that was available at that time, which was from the 2020 American Community Survey through the U.S. Census. And at that time, the median average rent in the city of Saline was $954. And it was reportedly that it only had gone up 2% in the previous 10 years, from 2010 to 2020. Now, I know anecdotally and otherwise, from working in other communities, that rents have skyrocketed in the last couple of years. So I took the liberty of doing a, a market rate survey of rents in the city of Saline, and I believe you received that handout. It's, it's two-sided. The first side shows you that these are, these charts are actual rents advertised online on August 25th, which was a couple of weeks ago. Also had some conversations with some of the landlords. As you can see, the first set of charts is for single-family homes that are currently advertised for rent in the city right now. It's listed by their size, meaning one, two, three, and in one case, a four-bedroom home, what the advertised rent is, and of course, the average then becomes the advertised rent for that unit. The average of all the single-family homes was $1,959 per month. Of the multifamily apartment complexes, I was able to get data online and through phone calls for Six Trails, Thorncrest Estates, Westgate, and Rocky Pines Apartments. They're all one and two-bedroom with one exception. Westgate offers three bedrooms, and they're obviously a little bit higher end if you look at the numbers. The multifamily apartment average among all sizes was 1,395. You combine multifamily and single-family gives you a city-advertised current average of $1,763, much higher than what the 2020 census numbers were. Also, there is a fairly reliable online source. It's called rentalsource.com. It's annotated on the first page of the handout. They give market rate information for geographic areas, and you could input any area that you want. It actually will outline the city jurisdiction by border and show you on the map what's there. Just for information purposes, they report this year's average in Saline is 1511, which is slightly lower. Now that, their survey was done earlier this year, probably about six months ago. That's 10% more than the average in March and Oak County as a whole, 25% more than the average for the state of Michigan, and 1% more than the average for the United States as a country. So Saline rents are above average in pretty much every bucket of comparison, if you will. And then finally, the final graph on that first page shows you the average for Saline, the county, Michigan, and the country, and then the one, two, and three-bedroom averages as well. If you flip over to the other side, it gives you an idea of what the projected landlord compliance cost would be. And I will tell you right now that I was, tried to do this very, I don't know, I don't know if you consider it conservatively or liberally, but I took into account that most of the time, there's probably going to be at least one reinspection. So I built that cost into it. So we're not expecting perfection here. So for a single-family home, counting the registration fee, the biannual initial inspection fee, and then one reinspection fee, with a total of $310, the first year, including that one-time-only registration fee, that's $12.92 a month on a two-year rental cycle. Based on the average rents in Saline right now for single-family homes, that's 6/10ths of 1% of monthly rent. So if rent had to be raised to compensate for the cost of compliance, it would be raised by less than 1% of what it currently is. After that, subsequent cycles, the registration fee is no longer considered, and it drops down below half a percent. Very similar results for multifamily. Now, I took an eight-building unit, or building with eight units in it, and considered that there would be three accessory facilities, maybe a laundry room, a mechanical room, and something else, and that each one was inspected and each one had to be re-inspected one time. So you're looking at one building inspection, eight-unit inspections, three-facility inspections, and a total of 12 re-inspections. Again, that comes out on the first cycle, including registration, to $9.40 a month. On a two-year cycle, less than 1%, and then subsequently, it drops down a little bit lower. And of course, if they qualify for the incentive bonus, you can knock 50% off of these costs. So that kind of gives you an idea of where that's at. And I, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have about the ordinance or fee schedule.
Very good. Mr. Radzik, we appreciate the very thoughtful and thorough presentation. More importantly, we appreciate the work that you and staff and legal counsel have done on this matter since the topic was first presented in the spring. As I indicated, at that time, this is something I am strongly in support of. I think the substance, the tone and tenor of this policy strikes the right balance. It's not heavy-handed, while at the same time, it ensures accountability and reemphasizes the fact that every tenant in the city of Saline deserves to live in a safe and healthy rental unit. So I am enthusiastically in support of the policy, and will be voting in the affirmative either later this evening or at a subsequent date if the council decides to defer action later this evening. City manager, before we open up for questions, do you have anything that you would like to add?
No, I just want to, again, thank our staff and our consultants for working diligently on this. We've spent the last few months really fine-tuning this, and I think this is probably one of the most comprehensive ordinance processes that we have, we have followed. And this is the right topic to really take our time with and do right.
Very good. The only other thing I would add, and I think I mentioned this this past spring, is most of our landlords are good, conscientious, decent people who want to do, do the right thing. So I think they'll, they'll understand the importance and the rationale behind adopting this, this new policy. It's also my hope that using the FYI newsletter, social media, the website, and maybe also doing a PSA that we can aggressively communicate on this policy subsequent to its adoption. Let me start, I'm going to give everybody an opportunity to ask questions and share thoughts because this is an important substantive matter. I would ask that you exercise some brevity because we do have a lot of ground to cover this evening. I'm going to start to my left and end to my right with Mr. Delarco. Mr. Delarco, I'm calling upon you first, one, of course, if you have any questions for staff or for Mr. Radzik, but also to provide some additional perspective from the code review committee, which has reviewed and vetted this policy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that working on this ordinance has been one of the most seamless process I've been involved in during my time on the code review committee. And we owe that to Mr. Radzik. He came to this meeting with a very finalized draft of what this policy should look like, and it had been thoroughly vetted by Attorney Jesse O'Jack. We just had a few minor tweaks from the code review committee, which have been enumerated, namely, the distance that the representative agent should be within proximity to the property, the incentivized bonus, time bonus for incentivized compliance. One thing that was not touched on that we, we modified slightly was the requirement to report rent only at the time of registration because there was some concern on the code review committee about the assessor's office and how that might play out. So we, we looked at that a little bit. But I would hope that the council wants to move forward with this. This is long overdue for our citizens, and it's really an opportunity for us to provide a better quality of life.
Very good. Thank you for that. Mayor Pretend Girba, any questions or comments?
Yeah, a few. You just brought up that issue about reporting rent. I'd like to have a little more understanding of that because it seems to be more of a private matter than necessarily the city's matter.
That came up not only here, but in other communities in conversations with the assessor's office. Apparently, I'm not an assessor, but I've been told many, in many communities, that multifamily properties, in some cases, are, the rent income can be used or is used, in some cases, to help determine property value. It was collected where I used to work. It was, it's collected in some other communities, and some choose not to. But that was the reason, and to Mr. Delarco's point, the committee had made the recommendation that it be told that it should, we're asking for the rent amount at the time of registration, not continuously thereafter. So in section 1, 18, 187, in the very first paragraph, it states the amount of monthly rent to be collected from all sources for each dwelling unit at the time of registration. So that, that is addressed as well. And again, if council's not comfortable, that can be stricken from the ordinance, if you will.
And I can add in here.
But that's the reason for it, is the assessor's request.
I can add to, Mike. One of the other reasons is that it adds a snapshot in time and data that's not collected very well. I mean, obviously, the ACS provides a median, but usually, it's a, it's a best guess based on other market factors and other data sources that the Census Bureau uses. We can conduct informal surveys, but you know, it's a matter of data practice. And we, for our survey or a data standpoint, it's not always the best. This is a great way to get a complete list and a comprehensive piece of information that I think goes to our housing costs. I collect data on the median housing price of Saline every month. You know, how much was it above listing that the Realtors Association collects? I know that landlords feel that it's intrusive, but we're not using the data in any way to scare them away or to do anything like that. I think it provides staff an important snapshot, but I can understand the concerns.
From my understanding, it would be, is this going to be used to reassess those properties? They're still subject to the headle, would they?
I, I think that it could potentially factor into an assessment of the property, but I don't foresee it drastically changing anyone's assessment. But City Manager O'Toole has a comment.
Yes, they're still subject to headle. So there's, there's a limit on that regardless. I would, I would think that the use here isn't designed specifically for the assessor's department. It's for us to understand better our housing market data. Certainly, if there was a tax appeal, we may look at that information just again as we go through the process of collecting market information to make our case. But no, it's not specifically the, the goal of this to go through and reassess based on what we learn in terms of rental rates.
I know it wouldn't drive the assess, but it could drive the market assessment. You know, you have the headle and you have that.
Sure.
I'm just, for me, it's a point of contention that I think the public needs to be aware about that that would potentially bring about because I know that's been an issue in the past. And just clarification on that. The other question, you mentioned nation, the issue about being outside the United States.
Yes.
There is no consideration or potential discrimination based on nation of origin?
I'm not certain it's a matter of nation of origin as much as it is residency, current residency. And again, this was from the code review committee, and Mr. O'Jack did look at it as well. as well, and there was no objection.
And one thing, I guess, I was under the impression when we were talking about this, this was going to be mainly for multifamily dwellings and everything, so now this has expanded into single-family homes. How much of this has been actually discussed or presented to the public? I have a concern of this being an only one-week review and turnaround as a second reading, when the public and owners of individual homes have not had clear enough time to review this potential ordinance.
Certainly, I, I mean, it's always council's discretion, when you want to take matters back up, if you feel more time is needed.
In fact, one of the reasons, Mr. Girbault, I'm glad you brought that up, as the genesis for only asking to acknowledge receipt is, it was going to be my recommendation to postpone in light of our discussion at last Tuesday's retreat, where we wanted to begin immediately moving ordinances in the direction of both a first and second reading.
I know, it's September nineteenth in here, so it's going to at least be October, if any time. Appreciate that. Other than that, at this point, I have no additional questions.
It's all right, Mr. Girbault. I, I think, once again, you know, we're looking at rental homes in the totality that exist in the city, and that includes single-family opportunities, but oftentimes, with single-family homes, I mean, especially with non-experienced landlords, you can run into many of the issues that we have seen at Thorncrest and Six Trails. So I, I'm fully in favor of alerting the public to this change, but I do find it to be a necessity that they're included in this ordinance, too, because they're just as susceptible to having, you know, unsafe, unhealthy, or inhabitable conditions as any other rental property.
And I don't necessarily oppose that. My concern is that we know we have an issue with all the multifamily, and it's still continuing, Thorncrest being a clear indication of that, and I don't want this to get hung up by a potential pushback by the public, as we brought in single-family homes, which more affect individuals than it does a multi-corporation.
We all, we may also wish to clarify the question, legally speaking, whether we could even discriminate between single-family and multifamily homes in the, in the process of creating this ordinance.
I don't think you can.
My inclination would be that we could not.
Yeah.
That's helpful to know if that is the issue. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Dylan, questions or comments?
Thank you.
For either staff or our guests.
Yes, thank you very much. This is very comprehensive. I really appreciate the trust in data. So I have two questions for you. So will there be information provided to renters, and this is probably for more of the city side of things, I'll look at it that way, so that renters understand what their rights are, and understand this process, and, and know that they can, I, I want to make sure that they understand that if they're living in substandard conditions, that they can report it without fear of retribution. So I, I'd like to see how that process works, and if a renter were to report something, does that sort of bump them up into a list, like for an immediate thing? Like, if, if you're doing a yearly inspection, and somebody comes back and says, you know, "I have black mold in my house," or "I haven't had hot water in three months," does that trigger, at that point, the city to go in and re-inspect?
So there, there's two parts to it. So there is, in the fee schedule, a citizen complaint, and currently, if we have a resident of a multi-tenant building, whether that be a Six Trails, or a Thorncrest, or whatever, come to the building department or code enforcement with a complaint, we first make sure that they've documented it, that they've done their due diligence to ask their landlord to ameliorate the issue. So maintenance requests, you know, email chains with the landlord, phone calls, et cetera, to, to show us that they've, they've tried before coming to the city. And at that point, then we, we would go about it, how we would do any other sort of code enforcement, if someone, you know, had an RV in their driveway, or their grass was too long. We approach it in a very similar manner to the, to other code enforcement items. Mr. Radzick might be able to speak a little bit more in-depth about that specific process. But if it was a life safety issue, yes, that's, that's a priority to the city, where we don't tolerate, you know, substandard living conditions that, you know, go against the International Property Maintenance Code in such a way that it tangibly is affecting their health and safety.
I, I agree with everything Ben said. Our company has dealt with, I guess the best way to describe it is, I'll give you the extreme example on both ends, and then there's this plethora in between. So on one end, you may have a tenant living in substandard conditions for a long time, with a completely non-responsive landlord, and they're petrified, because they firmly believe that if they report it, and the city comes out, their, the very next day, they'll have an eviction notice on their door. And unfortunately, it happens. I've seen it happen time after time. So, under the state housing law, the city with its own building department is required by housing law to respond to any tenant complaint. The key is to get the tenant, to give them the courage to go ahead and complain if they feel threatened, whether it's real or perceived, that there's a threat of displacement if they do. So, in a way, this, it may take a little bit of time, but in the absence of any life safety emergency in the unit, the city will eventually come around, whether they call or not, and catch all these things, and take the monkey, if you will, off the tenant's back, and redirect that ill feelings, I guess, to somewhere other than the tenant, which, in my opinion, is a good thing. The flip side is, it's not uncommon for a tenant to leave landlord-tenant court, because they're getting evicted for some legitimate purpose, and immediately run and say, "I, there's all these things that haven't been fixed, and I need you to run out here and do this." And in most cases, when that happens, it turns out to be a bunch of, you know, made-up things, in order, in an effort to drag out that process. So the key is, as Ben, he alluded to life safety, if somebody alleges a life safety violation that exists now, I have raw sewage coming up into my unit, I have open electrical, I've seen sparks from one of the outlets, I've, I don't have smoke detectors in my unit, something along those lines, that is something that the building department or a rental inspector should respond to immediately, regardless of documentation, regardless of anything else, just to verify, yes, it is, it does exist, or no, it doesn't exist. And if it does exist, to take immediate steps to get it remedied, and put that on the landlord to get that done. This ordinance has, well, actually, it's in the fee schedule. There should be a policy on tenant complaints. I agree that tenants should be asked to provide some documentation or proof that they've given their grievances to their landlord, and that the landlord has failed to respond adequately within a reasonable period of time. Personally, in my last role in another jurisdiction, I saw those things on, written on napkins, I saw them in text messages, exchanges with landlords, and it should, if it's there, you should accept it. However, if a tenant calls to complain and alleges X, Y, and Z, and you get there, and it's just, it was, it's imaginary, it doesn't exist, the way this is written in the fee schedule is written, and again, this is to your comfort level, if the inspector or the building official determines that that code violation exists, it's written up, and the landlord is charged for the inspection. If it doesn't exist, that there's no evidence, it's one hundred, not that it couldn't be determined, just that it's completely unfounded, then that invoice goes to the tenant for showing up to do that inspection.
And then-
Now, the caveat to that is, if it's life safety, you just go regardless of any invoicing to anybody, because it's a serious matter.
Right, I will add, there's a couple of caveats. So we would be contracting code enforcement services from CWA, which has a fee for that inspection. So it's not my personal opinion that if I sent our code enforcement officer to go do an inspection, regardless of the veracity of that complaint, which is something that often happens, people make ill-informed code enforcement complaints, you know, we're not going to charge anybody for that. It would only be in the event that we would have to re-engage the services of Carlisle-Wartman's Code Enforcement Services Division, in which we would charge the tenant or the landlord for that inspection, because we don't charge other folks for code enforcement-related inspections. Obviously, life safety is a, is a different issue. And then to your original question, which I forgot to answer, for marketing, as to tenants as an option for them, that's something in the area that I've been considering lately, how do we inform tenants in a way, how do we inform them of legal services that might be available to them, if they're below the poverty line and things like that? And I, I think a direct mailer is probably the best option going forward, but that's, exists somewhat independently of this ordinance, although I do see how it is connected. But, but we will definitely be doing some tenant outreach to inform them of their rights as tenants in the state of Michigan, resources that might be available to them, as well as what the city is doing, and going to be doing, as it relates to rental inspections.
Fantastic. And then I'm just going to end with, just sort of a statement. When I looked over what the fines were, to me, they seemed nominal. They don't seem that they're really going to push somebody to do what they need to do. I mean, you know, oh, it's, it's a hundred-dollar fine, you know, versus spending five thousand dollars to fix electrical, yeah, I'll pay a hundred dollars. Would you suggest that they be higher? I mean, where do you find that sort of sweet spot?
Oh, great question. Just remember that fines go to the courts, so the city won't make any money from fines, and it, it's not a profit center to begin with, right? When an inspector gets to a point where they cannot get compliance, either through verbal requests, written notice of violation and requests, their best effort at turning on the charm to try to convince somebody to do something, when it gets to the point where you have to write a ticket and get him in front of the court, the city is expending time and, and energy and money to get them there. The end game, though, is to get compliance, so that there's a code-compliant place for somebody to live, that's safe for them and their family. So I guess I don't really have an opinion on the actual fines themselves, that are levied by the city or by the court. What, I think there was discussion about the fines with the, the review committee, if I recall.
Very briefly, yeah.
Very briefly, yeah.
It was clarified that this is not a source of revenue for the city, it's, you serve it by the court, so it kind of nullified that at that point. I don't know that imposing more stringent fines is, is going to help with the issue of compliance, but I don't have any experience with this, so that's more your expertise.
I mean, in general, stiffer penalties usually could encourage somebody to comply when they otherwise wouldn't. But, again, you'd have to talk with the district courts, because these days, things are, are very different. It's not uncommon, you come into court, and, you know, we're here, and we say, "We need them to do X, Y, and Z." The landlord says, "I promise I'll get it done in two weeks." They come back in two weeks, and they, the judge may say, "All right, you're in compliance, everybody's happy, case dismissed," and, you know, fines are waived, or whatever. So you would have to, the city would have to argue for the imposition of a fine at that point, as a punitive measure, after everything's been taken care of. So it's, it's a difficult conversation.
No, and, and I was not looking at it from a revenue stream, I was not looking, it was just more of an incentive to, to comply, knowing that there was a looming fee, and, you know, it's a specific timeframe or whatever attached to it, so that things don't draw out. I know we've had that with other complexes in the area where-
Sure.
It doesn't seem like what we're doing is motivating them.
These, the hundred, three hundred, and five hundred, the one hundred is probably too low. The two hu, or three hundred and five hundred are typically on par or higher than a lot of communities for subsequent, second or subsequent offenses. Now, take into consideration also, you could write somebody, like, let's just take it away from landlord-tenant, let's go to Tall Grass. You could write somebody a Tall Grass ticket every week, all summer long, but until they're actually convicted in court, it's still a first offense. It's only a second or subsequent offense after there's been a finding of responsibility by a court.
So, Mr. Radzick, if the one hundred is too low, would you recommend a one-fifty, two-hundred?
Yeah, you could go to one-fifty to two-hundred as a starting point, and then raise the others commensurate with that. But again, it's council's philosophy on this.
Councilmember Dylan, anything else?
No, I'll stop there, thank you.
And Mr. Harrington, just for your edification, back in 2020, we did, I don't think we ever mailed them, but we did produce a letter for the benefits of tenants and landlords that were distributed. I have several old copies in my office, I think there's some in the kiosk out front. We also received from Donald Lozinski's office, several boxes of the State Tenant-Landlord Guide, which can be disseminated and produced by any state representative or state senator. It is a very valuable resource.
Perfect.
You, you're, I'm sorry, to interrupt. University of Michigan, through their Student Law Project and Legal Aid, has absolutely great tenant responsibility and tenant aid information that they usually provide at all district courts, and I'm sure they would provide it here as well.
Mr. Seo, questions for staff or our guests?
Just comments. I read through it, and I was impressed with how thorough it is. Covered a lot of the questions that came up as I was reading along, so I don't have really any questions. I would like to comment on the one hundred, three hundred, five hundred fine schedule, though. Seems to me that as a first offense, anybody could, as a landlord, could probably, you know, incur an offense, a first offense. And the one hundred dollars would be a very nominal fee to cover, and to kind of be a wake-up call, because like Mr. Radzick said, most of these enforcement actions, the bottom line is to gain compliance, not necessarily punish. So as a first offense, I think one hundred is appropriate. It's a fairly low fee, it's sort of a wake-up call to say, "Hey, you know, you need to get your act together here," and if they comply, that's what we want them to do. And hopefully, there won't be any further. If there are further, then it accelerates significantly. So I think the one, three, five satisfies where I sit, and I was pleased with the ordinance overall. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, for all of you who worked on it.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Kamara Sulek, questions for staff or our guests?
Yeah, real quick. I, I've got to say that this is very comprehensive and very well-laid out. Thank you. Being in, being in real estate, I'd love to have this, love to have this data if I was appraising an eight-unit apartment complex. But this really spells it out. I think everything as described, and the one hundred, three hundred, five hundred included, is, is very fair for compliance, not, not as a profit center. One thought, as far as when we were discussing the tenants and reporting health and safety violations or concerns, is that something that we can put on the website and FYI? Some, some kind of reass, you know, reassurance that this is, you know, that this is an option? Because I, I imagine that they're not used to it, especially since we've been lacking for so long. We want them to come forward, and we've, we've seen why this, why we need more of this, and why all of this is coming, is forthcoming. So I, I would hope that we could get that information out to, to the tenants of the, of these buildings. Other than that, all, all the other things I was going to talk about have already been answered, asked and answered. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kamara Sulek. Last, but certainly not least, Councilmember Kraus, any questions for staff or our guests? Mr. Radzick?
Couple, couple of my questions have been answered. Lots of work, you guys. Great job, everybody. Code enforcement's cranking some good, good things out lately, that's really good, Mr. Harrington, good job to you, too. And you. But real quick, so the website, I thought the same thing, like, when you go to the website, because in an effort to make Celine more open for different people, and what they, what their needs are to come here, we've talked about attainable housing, I'd like to see a section on the website that says, "Know Your Rights," or tenants. Tenants and landlords are welcome in Celine. Almost advertised, because we need rentals, right? So it'd be great to see something on the website, "Know Your Rights," you know, just a tab on the website. The second reading thing is a big deal. We talked about this, I agree with Mr. Girbault, that, we need to stick to that more robustly, and give the, the public an opportunity to come and say their piece, and say what they want to say. I do worry, like what Mr. Girbault said, with single-family, like, if, if they, if the single-family landlords show up and have an issue with this, and it prolongs putting this in place for the rentals that we need it for, that, that bothers me. So, but definitely back to the second reading. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Great job.
Mayor Morrow, if you wouldn't mind, if I could just add something about the citations themselves, just so we're on the same page.
Please.
A failed inspection does not generate a citation. It would be consistent, willful, non-compliance. If they're not attempting to make progress, if they don't have a contractor scheduled, they may even pick up the phone and call a contractor kind of thing, to fix, you know, an electrical issue, or mold, or unsafe floors, whatever it may be. That's at the point when the city issues a citation. We're not, we don't, we don't do it as a means to just get them to comply right away. Usually, it's a back-and-forth, a couple of inspections, repeated no-shows, things like that, at the point that we're administering a citation. So it's not, it's really meant to get them to court, more so than to court some sort of punitive- punitive punishment on them in that sense. But I can understand what you're coming to, Councilmember Dylan.
Mr. Mayor, may I just say two quick things?
Please, and I'm going to turn to my colleague, Mr. Girbert, who believes there's another question or two.
To Mr. Girbert's earlier comment about multifamily and single-family, I was under the impression, and I may have misunderstood when we started this, that it was going to be for all forms of rental housing. There was a discussion about equity and the fact that regardless if you're renting a home or an apartment or a mobile home, you would be inspected under the same set of standards. So if there was a misunderstanding on that point, I apologize. The other thing is, I've had numerous conversations over the past several weeks with Mr. Masiak, your building official, as well as Mr. Feldcamp and Bretternitz in your building department. And we've all kind of come to the consensus that it's in the best interest of the city based on building department records that the multifamily complexes go first on this two-year cycle. So that, it was an informal directive, if you will, or a wish from the building department that those be done first. And so if that protocol were to be followed, we would do that first, and then duplexes and multifamily home, or single-family homes would come after all the multifamilies were completed. And again, it's a two-year cycle, so we intend to kind of even out the workload over the 24-month period. Because it'll, among other things, it'll help us maintain consistency of staffing. We want the same person or people doing these inspections all the time.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Radzik. Mr. Girbert?
Just two questions. One with the recourse, say we do and discover a home that's not, or an apartment or whatever, that can't be occupied, what is our role in making sure that they have someplace to go?
Well, so the city doesn't have a dedicated housing authority, so it gets a little bit tricky in that sense, but obviously, I, I've already been in contacts with, I guess, obviously, I've been in contact with the county on, you know, housing-related services. It's good to always have those backdoor options. There are a variety of nonprofits, but the city would actively look to help find homes for displaced people. I believe the city helped find homes for displaced people. When one of the roofs fell in at Thorncrest, Mr. Radzik also has experience doing just that as well. So I imagine it'd be a team effort if such a humanitarian issue were to arise.
Just from the fact we haven't had something like this in place, what is our liability and our responsibility to make sure that that happens? What, what body does that fall upon?
I, I don't think it necessarily, legally speaking, falls upon anybody. Maybe Mr. Radzik could better speak to it.
Doesn't, in that situation, doesn't the landlord have some legal responsibilities?
If they do, it would fall under some civil statute that I'm not aware of. I, I, to my knowledge, Ben is correct, relocating someone doesn't, not that I'm aware of, it doesn't fall on the city government, it doesn't fall on the landlord, but Washtenaw County is very aggressive in providing aid to people in those types of situations. Teresa Gilati with Washtenaw County Office of Community and Economic Development has helped me in my former role many, many times in these situations. And we've, we've always been able to help facilitate relocation, but it wasn't ever the municipality's obligation, as far as I'm aware. No, your legal counsel may be able to give you, you know, better informed decision on that, but to my knowledge, that's not the case.
Which would be helpful if we knew, and then if we had a policy of how we would go about it. I just, it's great that we can go in and say, yep, you're right, but then they can't go back into the building and they're kind of screwed, so that's.
Well, you know, condemnation is a serious thing, whether you're condemning a single-family home or one apartment in a multi-unit building or an entire multi-unit building. It's a very serious thing. And that's something that can only be done by your city's building official. It's the only person that has the lawful authority under state law to do that condemnation. And it's a legal process, and the owners have, you know, they have rights, and so do the people living there as tenants. And so hopefully, it'll never come to that in any of these situations, but if it does, you'll see it, we'll, we'll see it coming. It would never just happen out of the blue, absent some horrific event.
Example I'm thinking of is the city of Adrian, which just had to shut down his 12-story building and relocate all of the tenants within that, and in fact, bought a whole motel in order to try to help house those individuals. So I know you're, it is an extreme circumstance, but we never anticipated what happened at Thorncrest either, and that was a similar situation, so thank you.
I was involved in a circuit court lawsuit in Ypsilanti Township. We, we unfortunately were forced to condemn 151 townhouse units in a complex called Liberty Square at Rossville in 94. And then ultimately, we, the municipality demolished it. So there's, it's still sitting, 25 acres at a freeway interchange is still sitting vacant, but that was a situation where it became crucial, and we, we actually spent weeks and weeks knocking on doors and talking to people. It wasn't something that, that we had to do, but we felt it was very important that we should, and so we did. And the county, the county sent teams out. They sent outreach workers, and they were very, very helpful. And I know that if it happens here, they'll, they'll also be there for you.
The other one, of course, when we talk about accomplishing this and informing it, you had mentioned that we would be hiring contractual, contracting, doing a contract with some organization to do the first initial investigations?
It would actually be for all subsequent inspections. So each rental inspection is effectively is similar to any other type of building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, safety inspection that we would do. We obviously only have two full-time staff and a contractor in our building department. In other cities, it's usually the dedicated job of somebody to do solely rental inspections. If not, it's a, it's a major part of like their calendar years, or like these three months, they will be doing rental inspections. We don't have the staff capacity to that. So the fee schedule is designed to not cost the city any money in that, and actually, it will earn the city money to offset our administrative costs of, you know, administratively flying up with these folks, if there are, you know, things that kind of fall through the cracks that require the city to be involved or use our equipment, such as BSNA, to record various enforcement and ongoing things. So Carlisle Wardman's Code Enforcement Services, which, which Mike is part of, would be primarily leading the group of contractors or consultants, I guess you could call them, that will be doing these inspections themselves, reporting to the city, using our software and systems to record them. And then, like I said, the fee is designed to capture their costs as well as capture the administrative costs that we'll have in executing this.
And no type of incentivizing for, there's two sides on how this could be handled, and I just want to make sure that there isn't any kind of incentive to over-inspect.
But no, I, I don't believe that CWA even has the capacity to over-inspect, although I could be wrong. But it, there's no real incentive for anyone to prolong this process by any stretch of the imagination.
With that, I guess that's my final question. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else before we entertain the motion to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Radzik, thank you again. Appreciate your time, work on this. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Kraus, seconded by Kamira Sulek to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. I will actually make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 844 and to approve advancing said ordinance for a second reading and adoption. I'm actually going to make that our first meeting in October to give us just a little bit of extra time to vet these issues and to provide some outreach to community members, specifically tenants and landlords. So that would be October the third.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Girbert. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? They'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to item two under New Business, which is 22-217 Personnel Policy Weapon Possession Language Update. This will be a motion to acknowledge the cover memo from Assistant City Manager Getzmann and to approve the change to the 2002 Personnel Policy.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Girbert to acknowledge and approve. Are you good seconding that, Mr. CEO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Assistant City Manager Getzmann, the floor is yours.
All right, this is just a short update to the Section 418 that you can see about possession of weapons. So City Manager O'Toole brought to my attention that I believe there was some interest on council in seeing open carry as well as concealed weapons for all staff who are on duty, other than law enforcement, obviously, who need to carry weapons, but anyone who's not. So I added in the language, after consulting with MML, we are allowed to do that as a policy, not an ordinance. So if there's any questions?
There are questions for Assistant City Manager Getzmann?
I just want to, I just want to add real quick, in follow-up to questions that I had received from Councilmember Dylan, I'd recommend that we amend line one to state sworn police officers, line three to delete the extra comma, and then the third line from the bottom to change an employee to an individual.
Those changes can be made without objection. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Getzmann and City Manager O'Toole. Councilmember Dylan, did you still have questions or comments?
No, those are the questions. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for the Assistant City Manager or discussion on the motion? Councilmember Dylan?
So just for clarification, how far does this expand beyond employees? So is it agents of the cities, volunteers, committee members, such, or do you have to be, like, does this body actually fall under this? Because we are not employees of the city. So I just want to clarify that it does say individuals representing the city. So I just want to make sure how far that net is that we're casting.
Yes, you, it is for individuals representing the city on city business. So you all would fall, in your capacity right now, would fall under that.
What about members of the public coming in for, say, a council meeting?
They're, they're not representing the city in that capacity. It's just representatives of the city.
Commission members, committee members, yeah. Anything else? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Girbert, seconded by CEO to acknowledge noting the minor modifications that were made to the document. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. I missed item 22-116 that Mayor Potem Girbert had removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go back to that. So this is agenda item 22-116, Building Department Tech Fee. This will be a motion to approve Resolution 22-216 to allow a $3 fee to be added to the Celine fee book.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Okay, moved by Girbert to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. Mr. Girbert, do you want to address your question or concern?
Yeah, I apologize, this was originally on New Business Agenda and then got moved underneath Consent Agenda after the many versions of this, so. I have a concern with applying a $3 fee for something that basically we now are shifting over, we're trying to improve upon, make it automated, but based on what this is, is an attempt to try and improve our process and everything and requiring individuals to fill out forms online, as I understand, and also to collect fees. Generally, when you do that, that means that we're trying to improve our function, which I'm 100% behind. It though raises the question of how do we benefit the community versus benefiting us as an, as a, you know, providing that service and stuff. I don't see a $3 fee to now require people to put their information electronically into a system is justified. And at this point, I think it's something we should be absorbing and be readjustified. Because I think we have more of a problem in terms of internal operations than having a $3 fee for someone now to make it into our computers.
All right, so there's a couple of points there. So the $3 fee is to offset the cost in theory, I'm guessing if we had a BSNA official here, they could explain it. So BSNA assesses us the $3 fee per each permit that they process through our system. I, I believe that largely has to do with hosting an online server theoretically on our behalf to, to hold, accept these permits. It requires more bandwidth from them to do that. So the idea with the $3 fee from their perspective would be that for them, it costs them money to process each of these permits. They would like to see it back if they're accepting credit card payments, et cetera. I believe it, it all kind of factors into that, that overarching cost. I think the system in of itself to receive permits benefits the community because there's a lot of time spent doing more of these clerical administrative tasks of receiving a permit application, manually entering it into the computer system versus this, which accepts all that information from either a contractor or a homeowner, automatically uploads it into our system and allows us to only do the review portion of permit processing, which saves a lot of time. There's a lot more time done and spent in the processing, tracking down the correct contact information for somebody, going back and forth with them. So just for a hypothetical example that happens every day, we receive insurance information that's incorrect or doesn't name the city as their certificate holder, which is a requirement of our building department. Now, we're emailing back and forth. Now, their insurance company, a third party to this conversation, randomly shoots someone in our, our department their insurance information. Well, that takes time. So the idea of the system is to streamline it, it's all in one place, we're not getting these random emails anymore, they're being submitted directly to us in our system. I understand that it, it's a $3 fee that we're theoretically passing off into the public rather than absorbing. The other option is we could just raise the application fee $28 to totally offset the cost. I mean, there's over, it's currently 25. So I mean, there's a variety of ways around it to effectively offset the cost and not have it labeled as a line item, technology fee, if that would be your preference.
If I may also add, I think it's important to recognize that the city doesn't generate revenue. We, we perform services, and really, it is the best interest of a municipality to make sure that those services are assessed to the users of the services and not borne by other people in the system. The city doesn't, the city can't really absorb cost. It just means someone else is paying for the benefit someone else is receiving.
Right, and, but also on the other side, you can only charge for what in costs were incurring, so if we're not going to have the same type of human effort into doing that, then you would think there'd be a reduction somewhere, unless you're saying right now that there will be no reduction.
There will be no reduction in staff as a result of this.
And there will be, so for me, the understanding is, we already have concerns with people thinking they're getting nickel and dime on things. This should be encompassed as an overall fee. I just don't want to see another line item into some.
So we could, we could easily make the, the fee now $28 instead of 25 so that it encompasses all the cost, if that's, if that's the preference to see it that way.
But the benefit of doing it this, too, from, if the treasurer recall right here, is that because BSNA specifically assesses us this, we can make sure that we're matching exactly what BSNA is charging us to exactly now this new tech fee. So we can effectively make that go into its own line item in our books versus having it in an application fee, which we're now pulling, and there's some probable confusion about whether we're fully capturing that fee or not. I'd also add that although we're not reducing staff, reducing staff time on this specific issue of processing permits, but there's a whole lot of other work that goes into administratively setting up permits. I mean, I spent 16 hours with BSNA to set this whole system up to begin with, in addition to many more hours, I will likely spend tweaking it, refining it, making it better, as well as other work that our clerical staff could be doing to better support the department and their process of reviewing these permits, rather than simply just receiving them and disseminating them, if that makes sense.
Again, I don't disagree with that. This should have been done, and we thought was being done for many years and hasn't been accomplished. You're the first one that's taken the lead to actually implement this. I'm 100% behind that. I just want to make sure that by automating and doing some of this, that there should have been some improvement, because we've really shifted some of the responsibility back onto the individual that's applying. So yes, we're charging the $3 fee, which we don't want to necessarily tax, charge all the other taxpayers. I just want to see where we're going to end, because our fees keep going up and up, and there's no savings, as it appears, as we start to automate and become more streamlined work from the process.
I don't think there's savings monetarily. I think there's gains in production. I think that's really where this comes from. I'll also add that it was BSNA's advice, it works with many communities, not only in the state of Michigan, but around the country. This is a fairly standard practice thing to do, but I understand the concern.
If you're amenable, as, as Mr. Harrington indicated at the beginning of this exchange, we can certainly invite someone from BSNA and/or the city treasurer to, to engage on this topic, if you'd like some additional background before, before acting.
No, that's not my concern. My concern is the overall, how this benefits is in the long run in terms of cost savings, staff savings, operational efficiencies. And there should be some gains by doing this, because this was one of the issues we have in a number of departments that I want to make sure, and I believe Mrs. O'Toole is making sure is occurring, it just seems that at this point in time, we're shifting another thing onto consumers and that we've already got complaints coming in about how the process works in our departments, especially in the building department. And I want to make sure that whatever we're doing doesn't exasperate that.
Mr. Harrington, Mrs. O'Toole, any additional comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor moved by Girbert, seconded by Dylan, simply to acknowledge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, please.
Ben, so about how many, how often is this $3 tech fee going, on average, is that going to be incurred, like, per week, per month? Do you have any idea on how frequent or infrequent that is?
We probably receive about 1,000 permits a year. So however many of them are filtered directly through our online system, which, like I said, is the goal, because it increases our productivity by a tremendous amount. It would be incurred every It would be incurred every time somebody applies for a permit. But if they're simply adding a document, if they request new information, that $3 fee, it's baked into the permit scale. So, we're not asking them for more money each time they update or modify an aspect of their permit. It would be only on submittal of a specific permit. But it's the same for, you know, a new build. I'm Pulte, I'm building this house in Bel Airis, or I'm a homeowner who wants to, you know, fix my water heater and has a mechanical contractor come to do that. But the fee is the same. Like I said, it really is just, I believe, the hosting fee for BSNA and their cost benefit for that.
Right. Yeah, I totally agree. I just wanted to clarify that. And the time that you've spent with BSNA on this, that was required regardless of this tech fee? Or is it?
In order, in theory, a staff member could have magically figured out how to work within the program to set it up themselves, but I think for the need of the technical expertise to think through the problems that logically arise with how their system operates, yes, that it was inevitable that I was going to have to spend time with them, and that was independent of the tech fee, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, and I concur with your take on this. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor to acknowledge, moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve resolution 22-216 to allow a $3 fee to be added to the Celine fee book? Or if you have a modified motion that's worded appropriately, the chair would be happy to consider that as well.
So moved to incur the fee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
I say having the motion carries six to one. We're moving on then to agenda item 22-224, transition of the REC Center Sustainability Task Force into the REC Center Advisory Panel. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the transition of the REC Center Sustainability Task Force to the REC Center Advisory Panel.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. I'm happy to address any questions, concerns you may have. My memo was pretty straightforward, and I think Director Scruggs would be happy to talk about any changes or additional work that has incurred subsequent to the REC Center Sustainability Task Force issuing their report to City Council. Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
I'm the one that requested this be removed, and I'm also on the task force. I have a concern that it says for another year. We have issues in terms of the whole process for the REC Center that are urgent at this point, and I'm not sure how the RFP and so forth will turn around in terms of another year of waiting. I just need to know what kind of timeline we're anticipating, especially with the, where we are in RFPs and so forth, and do we have an expectation that this will be done sooner than later?
Director Scruggs, you can sit there and turn on the microphone. You can come to the podium. From my perspective, I want to move as expeditiously as possible. I just provided, well, in the memo, I outlined a term of a year just to give the group ample time to work and to assist staff with whatever initiatives they deem appropriate. But perhaps Director Scruggs can elaborate on Mayor Potem Gearbaugh's question.
Right, and I guess just regarding the timeline and whatnot, you know, over the summer, I've been working on, I guess we're in the process of soliciting companies for the, for the needs assessment or facility assessment, or feasibility study. And there are, we've narrowed it down to one company. It was recommended by Canton Township. It was formerly called Green Play. I think we alluded to that during our final report late spring. So, still in the process of getting that taken care of.
We didn't do a formal RFP for Outforbit?
No, no, sent out to them. I'm identifying another one or two other companies that could do that type of thing. Canton Township and, of course, you know Greg Hollenberger, who was on our, on our committee, they performed a very similar study because there's some, there's Summit on the Park, which is their REC Center, is our same era. It was built in 1991, 92, and they were doing the same type of thing. They were looking at their facility, how they can kind of reconfigure, reassess what they're doing, et cetera.
For me, I believe that this needs to be done expedited, if you'd said expedited. I'm just really concerned. We have yet to have the final report on how the REC Center did for the fiscal year, and as part of the audit, it generally is done. So, concerns are from that perspective and just making sure that, I think, whatever comes out of those results needs to drive how we address this RFP, I mean, actually address this feasibility study. I'm just, I know we try to bring in the best experts for everything, but I would have kind of requested an actual RFP being done so that we had opportunities to look at different ones. So, generally, having a direction of that nature would have been better from my perspective, but I'll wait to see what we get. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. Gearbaugh said. I'm very kind of concerned about this process now. It seems like we're getting a lot of mixed messages about this RFP. It's, you know, it's in process, it's already been done, now we're saying we're not doing it. I thought that was what we had established as a body, that we were going to put out an RFP, and going with one company that was recommended by somebody that sits on the board, I'm not sure how comfortable I am with that at this point. I just think that this is, this is a feasibility study. We need to make sure, we have one shot at this, and we've now gone over a year with kind of spinning around with where we're at, and I'm really concerned from a funding standpoint. I mean, if we hadn't had ARPA dollars, the REC Center would be closed with a for sale sign on it right now. And so, what are we going to do next budget cycle? I'm very concerned about this and what the timeframe is going to be. This is an urgent matter, and we need to look at it from a lot of different aspects. It's not just, oh, we can increase membership. This is whether or not the city is going to be able to maintain the REC Center in the future.
Well, I mean, it seems like a simple enough solution. If there's consensus for the body, let's just put out an RFP.
Look, can I clarify, though? I would not recommend we do an RFP. If we do want to put something out, we should put out an RFQ, which is Request for Qualifications, not let's just select the lowest bidder to do this job.
Fine, I see. Is there any objections to doing that?
No.
No.
Let's move with that expeditiously then, and I think that seems appropriate and prudent. I want to be clear, because sometimes I think the rhetoric gets a little hyperbolic and hot. I'm very optimistic about the future of the REC Center, and I think that the trend of the last six months has been very positive in innumerable ways. I think some important changes have been, have occurred on site, the specific being the investment in, of a lot of slightly used equipment that, by all accounts, and I'm there multiple times a week, has gotten rave reviews from patrons. Now, certainly, there's more that needs to be done, this RFQ included, but I think moving forward with transitioning the REC Center Advisory Task Force into an advisory panel, assisting staff with additional initiatives or evaluations of services, programs, and amenities is going to be beneficial to us. Anything else? Okay, we do a motion on the floor then moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamira Sulek to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 22-225, International Property Maintenance Code Update. This is sort of a perfunctory thing, a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington, to approve or not to approve the first reading of ordinance number 845, and to approve or not to approve advancing ordinance number 895 for second reading and adoption to September 19th, 2022, Celine City Council meeting.
Move to approve.
First to acknowledge receipt, Mr. Del Orco?
Acknowledge and approve, yes.
Yep, actually, and you're going to be doing a second approve unless you would like to approve and then not approve, which would?
A second approve.
Okay, very good. It's been moved by Del Orco to acknowledge, to approve, and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. CO. Mr. Harrington, do you care to make a brief comment?
Hello again. I'm sure Mr. Radzik could tell you about all the interesting things that are included in the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code besides the 2018, but as it has been explained to me, as someone who does not have a builder's license or any, or any knowledge of state code, the biggest benefit is that it requires carbon monoxide detectors in units as well, and I think that's obviously crucial. There's more and more cases of carbon monoxide poisoning. It's also a specific issue in older homes that I'm aware of. Oftentimes, it's what people would consider like the horror movie effect, that most houses are not haunted, you just have carbon monoxide poisoning. Now, if Mr. Radzik has any other information about the benefits of the newer 2021 code, I don't see an issue. We would have usually done this with the state building code updating, but the state has also not updated its building code since 2017 from the international property maintenance, international code, thus the little bit of a lag or jog or whatever preferred terminology you'd like to use.
Very good. Are there questions for Community Development Director Harrington? Is there any discussion on the motion? That's been promptly moved by Del Orco, seconded by CO to acknowledge, to approve, and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item five under, well, item number 500, new business, excuse me, agenda item 22-223, sanitary sizing evaluation proposal for engineering services. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Superintendent Briggs and to approve or not to approve the proposal dated September 6, 2022, from Tetra Tech to complete a basis of design for wastewater treatment rehabilitation in accordance to task number one through six in the amount of $29,500.
Acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Kraus to acknowledge and approve. Is that seconded by CO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Briggs, would you like to begin, and then you can defer to Mr. Rubel when appropriate?
I, just real quick, I'd also like to add, the schedule that I passed out at the beginning of the meeting, the Q4 is the SRF loan schedule that we would anticipate following for the project. I know that there was a council question on the timeline of activities, and that outlines what our deadlines are.
Mr. Briggs, if you would give some oversight.
All right, so this is the next step in our process of trying to get a wastewater treatment plan upgrade rehab going. So, Tetra Tech, having a very strong involvement in the past, has a good idea of what the process of design should be, and we've been consulting between myself and Ms. Humphreys about which form this should take. So, this would be, again, the next step in this process, and you have the timeline. It's kind of a quick timeline, so we don't want to log anything down, basically.
Are there any questions? Just one question I have, and one of the, was the idea of this phasing, but also, and we review this, we have been talking about headworks. Is there, will that have any impact on what we're doing now in terms of our design to make sure that we move the headworks up as to begin as part of the beginning of the?
That's my plan to put it. I like to be the first thing to go in the ground, but it'll be subject to supply chain and all that kind of stuff, so, but yeah, this, the headworks is going to be included in this process too, so.
So, will be part of this?
Yes.
I wanted to make sure because I think that's been expressed by both yourself and Manager O'Toole and our task force that now become a priority.
Yes.
As it attributes to that. Thank you. With that, if there are no any questions?
I just have one. Del Orco? I'm unclear on the timeline of the phase one environmental part of this. Is that in the next phase during the survey phase, or is that in steps one through six?
I don't have steps one through six in front of me. Go ahead.
Could I jump in?
Yeah, sure, please.
Well, thank you. Well, good evening. Obviously, it's, I feel like most time I'm up here, you're spending dollars. I think actually tonight with the good news on the loan, I bring good news. Glad to finally be able to do that. So, phase one, actually, at the plant site was already completed back in 2020. So, I think that phase one will suit your needs.
Okay, so that doesn't have to be repeated. It's everything they'll require at the level of the state?
Yeah, certain excavations at certain parts of the site may warrant characterization, but as far as performing a new phase one, I do not believe we need to do that.
Okay, great. All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Well, is there questions? Sorry for my abbreviated absence. No additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
So, thank you. So, just so I'm understanding, so when we talk about, you know, steps one through six, we're looking at the scope of work that you gave us, that sheet. So, it's one through six is covered under this 29.5, and then?
Yes.
Step seven is its own?
Yes.
Bill. Step eight is its own bill. Now, what is the timing for those two?
Step seven and eight would likely be incorporated when we formally qualify and select a final engineering firm as part of the proposal for the design engineering and construction engineering of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rubel, do you care to comment?
Was there a question about schedule, the whole, the larger schedule, a second ago? Would that help?
That's why you sent this around?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that answer that? Okay.
It wasn't my question, but yeah. I think it should.
This is helpful. My question is more on just getting this headworks as part of the first phase because it's become quite clear that the wipes and all the other stuff that's going through is the problem that we're running into, and Mr. Briggs can discuss that issue of what we just had to deal with in terms of trying to unplug lines.
Yeah, and in particular, that is item number one.
Number one, yep.
There. Number one, your, the project plan included costs to do both a pump station and a headwork screening facility, both. I think the question number one will answer is, could we save some costs by just doing the screening and reusing your current pump station? There are a lot of cost-saving steps that we'd like to do as part of this, so.
And I think for me is understanding that this definitely is going to be something that could help with the interior, the complete process of what goes through this plan by having this resolved now sooner than waiting into another phase.
I heard that from everybody loud and clear when we did the project plan. Yep, yep.
Words were first thing in the ground.
Yeah.
Mr. CO, you have a question for either Mr. Briggs or our guest, Mr. Rubel?
Just this. We've had so many steps and studies and proposals coming through. Are we still on track to get done what we thought we were going to get done in this phase one and phase two of the project?
It will be aggressive. The design will be an aggressive design. You're on track to select a consultant in October, probably start in November. That will give you roughly eight months. It can be done. It will be, it will be, it will be aggressive, but it can be done.
Any additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor moved by Kraus, seconded by CO to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Our subsequent agenda item is 622-226, odor scrubber carbon replacement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 7, 2022 memo from Superintendent Briggs and to approve or not to approve the not to exceed amount of $106,250 for replacement of the carbon medium and to authorize, not authorize, City Treasurer to amend line item 590-999-998-003 in the final amount of the project up to the not exceed amount.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and authorize.
Moved by CO to acknowledge, approve, and authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Del Orco. Mr. Briggs, you care to make a brief comment?
Certainly. One of the reasons we have a not to exceed at this point is there's potential that we could save a little money by employing some of our city staff to do some of the work. The majority of the cost, obviously, is the, is the carbon itself, but the removal, using a vector potentially to remove it from the structure could save us some, some dollars, so.
Very good. Excellent. Questions for Superintendent Briggs? Mr. CO?
Yes, Mr. Briggs. This comes as a surprise to get to replace. Kind of. Kind of. We basically had a study done in July, I think, July, August, to see what state of function that the carbon was in, and it was brought to our attention that it was just it was just about exhausted. And so, yeah, in the future, I would do these studies in January so that we can get them or fall for the next fiscal year, because this was kind of a surprise. We didn't have any money in the budget for it directly already. So, yes. But now we at least have an idea of potentially how long, you know, we can think in the next three years, we may have to do this again.
Very good. Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. So are we, did we accelerate the use of the carbon? Is this a normal life expectancy? I thought it was much longer than that when.
Well, from what I get from the guys that were here when they put it in, the guys that are working for me said they had told them that it could be three years, could be six years, could be eight years, depending on how much H2S this thing is actually removing. And so from the comments from a couple of my guys I've been talking to lately, when the power goes down and that shuts down, the odor coming off of the RBCs is very noticeable. And when you start this up and it starts to work again, the odor just kind of goes away because it's pulled back into the odor scrubber itself. So, carbon scrubber. So, yeah, it's very effective. The fact that it didn't last that long is unfortunate, to say the least.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Briggs, I'd like to hear a question.
What is a typical warranty on the...
I'm not sure there is a warranty, to tell you the truth. Probably, probably lucky you get a year, but just because.
How long did this one last?
Three years. It went in 2019, I was told, so approximately three years.
Okay.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
Bill, can you remind me the pro, on the process? Does the carbon filter happen after it goes through the biomaterials or before?
See, this is a separate unit. So there's the, there's the bioscrubber, and then there's this carbon unit. The carbon unit is for, like, it works off the RBCs and the stuff up in that area. And the odor, the other bioscrubber is for the influent, the primaries, and the other odors that would come from off the digester. So they're kind of two separate units handling two different areas.
So the bioscrubber doesn't proceed going into the carbon? Because I know we've had problems with the biomaterial, that living and dying and some of that type of...
No, no. That's, in fact, that's, that's something that we've been working on, too, is making that more efficient, working it, making it work better, too, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Briggs? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? That's been moved by CO, seconded by Del Orco to acknowledge, to approve, and to authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bill. Have a good night. New business item seven, 22-213, cyber liability insurance, 2022. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the Node International Cyber Liability Coverage effective September 1, 2022 through August 31, 2023, and to authorize, not authorize, the City Treasurer to make the necessary line item, budget amendments for line items ending in 935-000.
Moved to approve and authorize.
Moved by Mayor Potem Gearbaugh to approve and authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. Assistant City Manager Gussman, do you care to make a brief comment?
Yep. So we got this in, obviously, after the rest of the insurance renewal, and it's just a difficult market right now to get cyber for cities. We're just a high target. So our carrier from last year declined to quote because we didn't have multi-factor authentication turned on for everyone, but I did work with network administrator Shonk, and so that's turned on now for every employee. And I am reaching back out to our insurance rep. He's looking into if any, like App Bay, the company we did last year, or Node, would redo a quote now that we have MFA enforced. But in order to not have any lapse in our coverage, we need to move forward with this right now, so.
And just one point of clarification, we are still currently covered. We gave administrative approval to cover for the period between September 1 and this, just because of the significant delay between our last meeting and now.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Are there questions for the Assistant City Manager? Councilmember Kraus?
Al, you answered the question that I had, really, but so if we do re-quote it, and are both companies amenable to prorating, like, the cancellation and the new one? Because obviously, we're looking to save money where we can.
Yeah, I, it's a question that I'll have to ask. I mean, it was kind of like it's up to the carrier and how they feel on the day, in terms of that. So, I mean, when that comes through, obviously, it's something.
Okay, something to keep on the radar.
Just if we can get a cost savings at all out of having MFA turned on, obviously, we want to right away, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
Just a statement. I reviewed with Lori Champion, who's on our risk management team, and a number of organizations are seeing these policies canceled left and right because the amount of liability is just going exponential. And so that, this isn't an anticipated concern, but I, I am concerned that, that they provided us enough lead time in order to make sure that we could cover ourselves. And so in the future, I'm hoping that if we should have the same issue, which we hope we don't because of the new multi-factor authentication, that we'll be able to not have this kind of lapse in the future. So, thank you.
Any additional questions? Any discussion on the motion? Thank you, Al. There's a motion on the floor, then moved by Mayor Potem Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilmember CEO to approve and to authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We move on to item eight, new business item 22-222, 865 North Ann Arbor Street, or North Ann Arbor Exchange Agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to approve or not to approve the agreement with Leachan Eschott for exchange of property and to authorize, not authorize, the mayor to sign.
I'm moved to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Mayor Potem Gearbaugh to simply acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Cameraj Sulek. City Manager O'Toole, would you like to begin?
This is a rather unique issue. So we have a property owner with property that is currently located in Lodi Township. There is a small section of the parcel which is legally not described either in their legal description or the legal description for the city's water treatment plant, which is directly adjacent to them. It's about a three and a half foot gap. In the process of preparing their materials to go to the State Boundary Commission to request annexation into the city, they identified the gap, and to make their application to the State Boundary Commission as clear as possible, they'd like legal documentation stating that the city is deeding this to them so that they may clarify and submit the application for that entire piece of note. That three and a half piece is currently in Lodi Township per GIS mapping. So it's the cleanest way to, to get their whole parcel, hopefully, through the State Boundary Commission. Once it clears that hurdle, they would deed the piece back to us. This is really not a consequential piece of property. It's a strip of land that sits between what was our emergency access drive to the wastewater treatment plant and a drainage ditch. So it's, it's not used by other party at this time. And this has been reviewed by our new legal counsel.
Excellent. I believe the petitioner and his legal counsel are here. Gentlemen, would you care to make a statement at this time?
If you'd reintroduce yourself for the record.
Sure.
Many people may remember the face from a different project. We're glad to see you here again.
This one's a little simpler. Scott Munzel, and I'm here representing Kurt Schmumberg and Li Shen. Scott, the city manager explained it fairly well. Basically, due to the, where the legal descriptions for the city properties, starting from the south, and their properties starting from the north, there's this gap of land, three and a half feet, that is not included in any legal description. It occasionally happens. In order to go to the State Boundary Commission and not leave a three and a half foot pencil of land unattached to anything, which we think would cause them some heartburn, there's only two parties that could have title to this, Kurt and Li Shen, or the city. So if the city quit claims it to, to Li Shen, then the application to the State Boundary Commission will have, it, three sides will be the city without this weird gap. So we think that'll make it easier for them to approve it. And then, as the city manager explained, it's really not usable by them. They'll then convey it back to the city. It'll be in the city, and your, your emergency access drive will be slightly wider, because there is, in fact, that three and a half feet actually exists. It's just not in any of the two legal descriptions. So that's really the long and the short of it. Happy to answer any questions.
Why don't you hang tight, Mr. Munzel. Out of curiosity, in a post-COVID environment, what are you hearing in terms of when applications are made to the State Boundary Commission? What's the turnaround in scheduling a hearing? And then, when do you expect a decision to be rendered?
Don't really have good intel on that. We have to file the application. They only hold hearings four times a year. I think one of them is in October, and then it's not until the spring, the next one. So it'll probably be a little bit of time still.
So maybe six to 12 months.
Yeah, I guess that would probably be all right.
Hang tight, just in the event there are questions best addressed by you. Questions for city staff or for the petitioner's legal representative?
Just clarification. There is no easement or no, not easement, I want to say, but any structure, infrastructure running through that definition? I mean, I'm glad to facilitate this, because this one property is one of our issues that needs to come into the city. We surround it. We provide additional services to it. So what are we can do to facilitate this? And if the property's coming back to us, I appreciate that. I, I was just concerned that maybe because the old water tower and everything was there, there might be some structure that went on there, but it's not, they're fine.
No, it did not appear from RJAS that there was running, that there was anything running through that particular section.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff or the petitioner? Then let's vote on the motion simply to acknowledge receipt that was moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Cameraj Sulek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Is there now a motion to approve or not to approve or to authorize, not authorize?
To approve and authorize.
Moved by Mayor Potem Gearbaugh to approve and authorize. Was that a second by you, Mr. CEO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Munzel, thank you. Mr. Al Scott, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor approving and authorizing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item nine, which is 22-212. This is the First Amendment to Land Sale and Purchase Agreement for 207 Rose Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to approve or not to approve the amendment and to proceed with closing.
Acknowledge and approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Kraus to acknowledge and to approve, and seconded by Gearbaugh. City Manager O'Toole?
This is a pretty straightforward amendment. Basically stipulates what documentation we're requiring as part of our due diligence for the closing, and then sets the parameters for when the closing date will be established.
Questions for city staff? Any discussion on the motion? Easy enough. Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Kraus, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. I'll start to my left and end to my right. Mayor, or, excuse me, Councilmember Del Orco, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to report that we had great success with a new vendor we were using for recycling collected at Summerfest. The name of the company is Shoe Pan. Just some quick numbers for you. They recycled 77 pounds of cardboard, 49 pounds of glass, 165 pounds of plastic and aluminum, for a total of 291 pounds. I'm very proud of this initiative. These amounts would have ended up in the landfill had Summerfest not put forth the effort to recycle. So a great big thank you to Paul Heineck and his folks, as well as recently added member to the Environmental Commission, Al Hodge, for turning us over to this company and bringing them into the city of Celine. I'm pleased to also report that Oktoberfest will also be using this same vendor, and I'm hopeful that we can export this practice to this Celtic festival as well.
Very good.
With code review, we spent the majority of our last meeting discussing the auxiliary dwelling units with a representative, Carlisle Wartman, and we're still dotting some i's and crossing some t's there, so expect to see that come to council soon.
Very good. Mayor Potem Gearbaugh, Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
The last planning commission was just postponed till, I believe, October, the marijuana request on the west side of town. And then this week, we'll be meeting to discuss special use permits for pet, dog grooming, I believe, Mr. Harrington. Is there any? In two different locations in town. Is it?
Did you mention the master plan?
Oh, shoot, yeah. We also met last week with the master plan working group to proceed with getting what we need to address in terms of what we believe could be potential changes or ideas, so that we will begin scheduling town hall meetings for likely late October or November to meet, probably at Liberty School twice, so that we can get the public's input and provide additional information in terms of what we believe may need to change in the master plan. We don't believe it's going to be a full review at this point, but there are a number of things that have come up just in the last five years that we feel that need to be discussed and included in our plan as we move forward.
Very good. Councilmember Dillon, Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Thank you. I don't have any reports. Just, we've had meetings postponed, so the historic district will be meeting this Thursday, the 15th, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And the next fire board meeting will be on October, or me, October 5. There'll be a work meeting at 5:00 PM, the regular meeting at 6:00 PM, and that does happen at the fire station. Last, I had the opportunity to attend the monthly status meeting with Celine Township and Andalina Farms. And so I just wanted to report out on that, a little bit of what's going on. That was actually going to be the last status meeting regarding phase one. They are pretty much closed out all of the permitting process and such. They do have one outstanding issue, which they're still working through, but for the most part, they've gotten all of the checks they need to do. Let's see what else is happening out there. They are now moving into their phase two pre-construction meetings. That is an active construction site that they are just awaiting permits to continue through. And the only other thing is that we were told that their, their onsite wastewater treatment plant is now actually discharging. They're not pumping hauling. They are not storing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. CEO, Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Nothing except, well, the healthcare committee met last week, but I'll defer that report to Ms. Kraus. And I see they were moving, they were moving Earth out there in phase two of Andalina Farms today, too.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Cameraj Sulek, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
I do not have any to report at this time.
Councilmember Kraus?
Thank you. I do. Thank you, Mr. CEO. We had a very long and productive healthcare task force meeting. The summer hit us hard, as I know it hit other groups, but we are preparing our presentation to council for next week. We will be electing a new chair, as I will be outgoing, co-chair, secretary treasurer. So there's some exciting stuff to come for that. Lots of work. It was a really good meeting. Arts and Culture, just want to refer people to our Facebook page, because we have been slacking on sending out the Art Around Town information, and that is totally on me. I didn't, guess, totally realize I was supposed to be doing this. That's my fault. But there's six or seven more artists that we have to showcase, and so I'd like people to know some of the information behind all the really super cool art that's downtown. So that's a big deal. And so if anybody wants to peek in, that would be great. That's it.
Very good. Let's transition then to reports or other announcements. Mr. Del Orco, do you have any?
I do not. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
I apologize. I forgot to mention the risk management task group we met last week. We're now trying to break out some of the tasks based upon infrastructure, public, public safety, and then also fire departments. So hopefully, there will be a subcommittee that's being developed to address that and working with the chief to further discuss concerns and issues that revolve around fire protection within our community. And one thing I just want to mention, I did have a good encounter. We were out at the Celine Fair this past weekend, or past week, and had a number of individuals that had bought historical homes in our historic district and in town, and were very enthusiastic about maintaining and preserving their homes and wanting to become more involved with our community in that aspect. And I think that's a great sign of what our HDC and, I think, our historical society has provided in the idea of preserving and maintaining historical assets to benefit our community. So that's good news from my perspective of seeing that happen.
Very good. I was asked to, by the city clerk, to remind folks, not just on council, but in the community, and more specifically on our various boards and commissions, that we will have a parliamentary procedure class here at City Hall on September 29 at 5:30. Should probably last a couple hours. And then I know this group has talked about this issue at nauseam, but I wanted to plant one additional seed, because Oktoberfest is this weekend. Whatever we can get, do to get those, and I know our influence is limited, but whatever is possible to get those streetlights operational on, on South Ann Arbor, that has got to be a priority this week. We're all aware of it. It, it's a detriment to public safety. We have a large community event in that vicinity on both Friday night, all day Saturday, and Saturday evening. The street needs to be, to be lit. And on that note, Oktoberfest is this weekend, begins Friday night uptown, all day Saturday. Come see us. It is the main fundraiser for the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Guild. We cook German food, and due to some unexpected absences, yours truly will be cooking most of the food, so. And I'll be assisting, so. Yeah. Uh-oh.
Wait.
I'm actually a pretty decent cook when I, when I choose to exert the effort, so.
Danz has, Danz has a booth, too.
Again.
Danz has a booth, too.
Yeah. If you want some good, authentic German food, and you want to help our sister city group, please swing by. Councilmember Dillon, any reports or announcements?
Just for announcements, and I'll defer probably to the city clerk or the city manager for the specifics. We do have town hall meetings coming up for our road millage.
Correct. We have a meeting that is now set for September, this coming Monday, September 19th at 9:00 AM. That will be at the senior center. And then our next meeting is September 28th at 6:00 PM at the library.
Did that press release go out today?
I don't know that if it went out today. It was finalized today, so it should go out Thursday, tomorrow.
Yep, please make sure of that. And then if you can also make sure that IT does some sort of a post on, on social media that we could then share with the announcement. that we could then share with the announcement details about both town halls, that would be great. And actually, an electronic copy of that flyer that we produced would also be beneficial to send to city council.
Sure, no problem.
Very good. Anything else, Councilmember Dillon?
No, thank you.
Mr. CEO, reports or announcements?
Yes, Your Honor, I do. Thank you for bringing up the Celine Lindenberg Association. We had a board meeting last week, and one of the topics we discussed was the upcoming trip to Germany in 2023. There are only five places left, it would appear. There's been a lot of interest expressed in the trip, so if people want, are still interested in getting on board that plane next year, in June, I would encourage you to get ahold of Jim Roth. I think he's listed in the phone book, and make arrangements through him. Deposit would be required to secure your spot.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Kamara Sulek, any reports or announcements?
Nothing further.
Councilmember Kraus?
Nothing, except I enjoyed the fair. I hope people got out to see it. Dean and Miley did a really good job. We stopped by their booth. Miley's daughter even helped, so it was really nice to see some of that stuff.
Last item is the proposed ethics policy. City Manager O'Toole, did you want to comment at all?
Yes, I think at this point, we're really just looking for consensus whether we want to go the route of creating an ethics committee to oversee these activities, or more the route of an ethics investigator or Amos Budman type situation. So I'm looking for council feedback on that subject, and if we can't get consensus here, whether we would require a work session at our next meeting.
Let me start again to my left and end to my right. Mr. Delarco, any thoughts?
Just from looking at the evolution of this policy as it's before me now, it looks like there has been some attempt made to assuage anxieties people have around members being appointed to the committee having some kind of bias or conflict of interest. It does look like there have been some safeguards put in place to minimize the chance that that would happen, and just from the code review committee's perspective, that there would be a hybrid approach anyway if there was pressing concerns that needed to involve independent counsel, that that would be the route that we go. I'm comfortable moving forward with the policy as it exists before us today, but my colleagues may disagree.
Yeah, very good. That was clear. Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
The only hangup for me is, again, I want an independent review, so it either would be through Wasna County, the state of Michigan, or through a legal, hiring of a legal authority.
Okay. Councilmember Dillon?
Yes, that's sort of, I think, still the sticking point for me is the creation of Board of Ethics. At this point, I think I've expressed it numerous times, that I believe, as Mr. Gearbaugh has said, it needs to be an independent body, and it cannot include the city manager, as she is actually considered under the control of the city, and I would not want to see there be statements as though, you know, you work for us, made. The other thing that I would like to ask about is that there is a mention at some point of like a two-thirds vote that was under the Section 2-8, and I just wasn't sure about that. I don't know that we ever generally do that.
Yes, so the response to that was, a two-thirds vote was the language recommended. If you recall, we kind of based this whole conversation off of the Attorney General's opinion, and our attorneys' comments are, we don't have to stick with a two-thirds vote, it could be a simple majority, whatever this body's pleasure is.
We just generally don't follow a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, if we'd like to just change that to a majority vote, that would be perfectly acceptable.
Okay. And then my last question is, you know, just sort of resonating, have our new attorneys looked at this document as of yet?
Yes, this document, if you recall, was one that I originally had both our Dickinson Wright attorneys and Clark Hill attorneys looking at. So Attorney Mullet has given this her stamp, and many of the changes are a reflection of her comments.
So I guess I want to know, we tentatively have a work meeting scheduled for next week to work through this. And then we are going to vote, I believe, try to put it onto the agenda for the next meeting. So are we going to still look at having a work meeting? Are we going to see this prior to that? I guess I want to understand.
I need to develop consensus from the rest of the group to see if a work meeting is necessary. So that's what I'm doing right now, is kind of taking a head count as to how people feel about the existing policy, or whether there's sections that they would like to discuss and debate further prior to consideration and potential adoption, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Mr. CEO?
I feel much like Mr. Delarco. I'm satisfied with the ethics policy the way it is. I'm glad it's not in ordinance, because you've already had about four or five readings on this thing. My only fear is if we were to establish an independent body, or to hire an attorney or something like that, if we ever ended up with a real stinker on council, we could run up a pretty high bill trying to bring in outside resources to sit on a board like this. So, again, like I say, I'm satisfied with the way it is, and I'd be ready to move forward.
Okay. Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yes, I like this iteration of it, and I'm happy with the way that it is.
Okay. Councilmember Kraus?
Independent body, and I'm good.
Okay. Well, then let me ask this question a little bit more directly. Seems like the major, maybe a slight majority are in favor of voting on said document. Show of hands, is there, who would be in favor of continuing with our proposed special meeting on the 19th to discuss this policy further?
I just think that at this point, we're sort of a split vote as to the one issue which is sort of, of creating this Board of Ethics. So I don't know where we're going to talk that through.
You could be right, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like, it seems sort of like it's maybe a five to two or four to three split right now. So if there's not desire to meet on the, for a special meeting on the 3rd, then we will just proceed with having this as an enumerated action item either at our next meeting or subsequent meeting on, excuse me, the 19th or the 3rd. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
Action item, okay? Okay, Mr. Gearbaugh, seemed reasonable? Okay, all right, everybody good?
Well, I guess I just want to understand then, are we going to see another version of this prior to that? Will there be discussion? It does seem as though there are some of us that have great concern with the way that this Board of Ethics is being created, and so I want to make sure that, you know, we're all kind of understanding what that is.
Well, my head count, and the group can correct me if I'm wrong, is the majority are in favor of the way it is written currently. That may not be your opinion, and that's fine, but it seems like the majority, based on the round robin we just did, are in favor of voting on what is presented. Is that, is that correct, folks? Go ahead.
You know, that's a good question, because I read this, or days ago. So I think we could probably figure it out if we went to that spot that we're talking about. What does it say? Let's go right to it.
Yes, Section 3-1.
Thank you. This doesn't have to be a dead horse. So it's 3-1, right, Colleen?
Yep.
So let's go there real quick and just see. Can I read it so we can?
Please.
So there is hereby created a board to be known as the Board of Ethics of the City of the City of Celine. The board shall be comprised of three members and two alternates. All three and both shall be appointed by the city manager with the advice and consent of the civilian city council. Members shall have no conflict of interest, blah, blah. No person shall be appointed. So this is the thing that I personally had a problem with. I think it needs to be more specific as to who this is. I don't, maybe the attorneys, so let me be more clear. I'm not in favor of it as it is now.
Okay, all right, all right.
I think I wasn't clear, and Janet got me back to be clear.
All right. So if I'm, I'm going to make an assumption here, Councilmember Kraus, and you tell me if I'm wrong, I think based on some of your concerns, at least to me, it would seem prudent that we have a meeting to flush those out.
I do think so, and I was confusing the chair, and I'm sorry about that.
That's all right, that's why I'm doing a second round robin here. So we, I've heard now from Councilmember Kraus about having a work meeting on the 19th. Would you be amenable to that as well, Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Mr. CEO, I don't believe you're going to be here, so, I mean, don't mean to put you on the spot.
I will be here.
Oh, you will be here?
I will, yes.
Okay. Are you good with having a work meeting on this subject?
That's what the majority wants.
Okay, fair enough. Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Delarco?
It's fine.
Okay. So it sounds like the conversation is going to be focused specifically on that section, unless I'm hearing any additional objections or concerns, okay?
I would just say, if there are any specific, if we're leaning the direction of going with a committee, if there are specific comments or questions or language that you'd like to see incorporated, please try to get me those by the end of the day tomorrow, so that I can turn around a draft for our agenda packet this week.
And actually, in fairness, I believe I said that a month ago.
Yeah.
People did have proposed language or ideas on how sections, or more specifically, this section could be strengthened. Again, please get those in writing, it sounds like, by 5:00 p.m. tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I've been specific. I don't feel that the way this is written has the qualified people, who made this objection before in other committees, to assess this need if it's not a legal representative or some other nature of, from a outside governmental agency.
So the response to that is, I don't think that would be articulated in this policy. That would be articulated in its bylaws. So this, this is about the creation of the entity, not necessarily the specific parameters of who is on the committee. That is a part of setting the bylaws for the committee.
And will be promulgated by that committee at its first meeting, as is spelled out in this document.
Correct. But absolutely, in the capacity that's currently outlined for me in this policy, very much so, we'll take council's direction into consideration in terms of finding people who have qualification or some capacity for this type of work.
I don't mean to muddy the water, and I'm not necessarily suggesting it, but what would preclude city council, in conjunction with adopting this policy, also creating the bylaws for said committee?
You'd be welcome to.
That would be helpful.
To do that at once, so there's no ambiguity, you're getting exactly what you desire.
Yep. I agree with the mayor on that, because I'm concerned that if you create a group that doesn't have the bylaws in place, you're basically putting individuals that, it's, you'd be telling people to resign from the initial creation of the bylaws if they don't qualify. You know what I mean? So I'm way up in favor of what you just mentioned about creating our bylaws, so if you can produce something that then has our qualifications.
That will not be ready by next week.
Okay, well.
Just.
Well, let's zero in on this, let's zero in on this issue next week.
Yeah.
We don't need to blabber the point this evening, and if there's consensus to, in fact, develop the bylaws in advance of these individuals being appointed, and to do, and to adopt the bylaws in conjunction with said policy, we can chat about that at that time.
So would, is there consensus, though, that council is amenable, and maybe this is a discussion for next week, to the change then, because we need to change the policy to stipulate that council establishes the bylaws for this committee?
I think that's going to be best, but I'm just one of the seven. It seems like Mr. Gearbaugh also concurs with that point about establishing the bylaws in advance.
Yeah, I want to establish bylaws.
Okay, Mr. Delarco?
I have no objection to that.
Okay, Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
You're in favor of establishing the bylaws in advance?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. CEO?
If it breaks this logjam, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, Mr. Kamara Sulek?
I agree.
Okay, all right. It seems like that's unanimous. That language can be removed, and we can work to develop bylaws as well. Okay? Well, we will discuss this issue further then, next Monday, beginning at, is it 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay. If there's nothing further to be brought before Celine City Council this evening, we come to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or questions to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There any citizen comments? The record will reflect, there are none. Please note our upcoming meetings, and the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:22 p.m.
So moved.
Moved by CEO, seconded by Kraus. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.